At six o'clock, thank you for joining us for the Cloverdale City Council meeting. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Bagby.
Thank you, sir. Nothing to report out on closed session? Any conflict of interest declarations? Any changes or deletions to the agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
Thank you. Public comments: Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Do we have anyone in our public audience that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, do we have anyone in our virtual?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No one is online at this time.
For anyone online that would like to make a comment, you raise your hand or hit star nine. I'll give you a minute. Perfect, thank you. Okay, decommunications. Congressman Mike Thompson regarding water supply. Is that you, David?
Mayor, members of council, I just want to direct your attention to correspondence that was received from Congressman Thompson's office. It was included as correspondence in your packet. It was received after the agenda was published. This is in regards to actions taken by PG&E with respect to their their water facilities located on Scottsdale, which is part of the Potter Valley Project. Again, no action necessary tonight. Just wanted to make sure council was apprised of this correspondence from our congressman, given the potential consequences or impacts of the actions by PG&E on our water supply. Council may want to refer this to a council subcommittee in case, which if you do, should suggest either the Public Works Subcommittee or the Finance Admin and Police.
I think that goes for sure. I see a lot of head nods. Definitely put it onto one of the subcommittees. Anybody have a preference? Then David, I'll let you choose whichever one it fits best. Thank you. Proclamations and presentations. First one is a proclamation for Caesar Chavez Day. Wheeler.
City Council proclamation recognizing March 31st as Caesar Chavez Day. Whereas Caesar Estrada Chavez was born March 31st, 1927, on a small family ranch near Yuma, Arizona. After serving our nation in World War II, Caesar Chavez returned to farm labor in California and began advocating for farm workers' rights. On April 23rd, 1993, Caesar Chavez passed away, leaving behind an enduring legacy of service and leadership. And whereas Caesar Chavez's influence has made a lasting impact on farm labor issues and inspired millions of Latinos to achieve educational and political success. And whereas Caesar Chavez's leadership will be remembered for utilizing the principles of nonviolence and service to community. And whereas Caesar Chavez founded the National Farm Workers Association, which ultimately became the United Farm Workers of America, UFW, AFL-CIO, the first successful farmworkers' union in the United States history. Under Caesar Chavez's tireless leadership, the UFW was the first to win collective bargaining rights for farmworkers. And whereas the UFW's collective bargaining agreements significantly improved the quality of life for farmworkers throughout the United States. And whereas in 1994, Caesar Chavez was posthumously awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom, the highest civilian honor in the United States. And whereas on Caesar Chavez's birthday, March 31st, individuals and organizations throughout the nation will celebrate his life and work by participating in community service projects. Now therefore, it be resolved that Mayor and City Council of Cloverdale do hereby proclaim March 31st, 2023, as Caesar Chavez Day. Now therefore, be it further resolved that the 31st day of March shall annually be known as Caesar Chavez Day of Service and Learning in Cloverdale in order to reflect on the honor, the life of this distinguished leader, promote the principles of nonviolence, and service to community. Presented this day, March 22nd, 2023, signed by Todd Lanns, Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments? Okay. Next, E2 is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale proclaiming March 2023 Women's History Month. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of Cloverdale in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas the theme for 2023 is "Celebrating Women Who Tell Our Stories", in recognition of women, past and present, who have been active in all forms of media and storytelling, including print, radio, TV, stage, screen, blogs, podcasts, news, and social media. The timely theme honors women in every community who have devoted their lives and talents to producing art, pursuing truth, and reflecting the human condition decade after decade. And whereas particularly important is in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our city, women have served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but have long advocated for compassionate treatments and new directions in public health and in women's mental and physical health. And whereas, the City Council of the City of Cloverdale dedicates this month of March to all who continue to advance the importance of healers and caregivers who are helping to promote and sustain hope. And whereas, the City Council asks others to reflect on the achievements of women and girls across the centuries and pay tribute to the pioneers who paved the way. Let us recommit to help realize the deeply American vision of a more equal society where every person has a shot at pursuing the American dream. In doing so, we will advance economic growth, our health and safety, and the security of our nation and the world. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Cloverdale does hereby proclaim March 2023 as Women's History Month in Cloverdale, dated March 22nd, 2023, so ordered myself, the mayor. Comments? Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to our current City Council members, Marjorie Morgan Stern and Councilmember Bagby, for putting themselves out and representing females in our community. Immediate past council members, Councilmember Marta Cruz, Mary Ann Brigham, Carol Russell. They all stepped up the plate when it was time to represent. And they do a great job for us, and I just wanted to say thank you for putting yourselves out there.
I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing us.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to E3, the Student Liaison Report. Unfortunately, she could not be here tonight, but she emailed me a report and I will read it. Congratulations to Desmond Driver, winning Mr. Eagle, and Seth Donch placing runner-up. And congratulations to the other contestants, and thank you for those who went to the event raising money for the senior class. That event was so funny and by far the best I've ever seen an event from a high school. The kids were great, their acts were great, their questions and answers and everything they did were phenomenal. And it needs to fill that gem next year because it is one of the best things that Cloverdale has. Seniors have started preparing for their portfolio presentation, which is scheduled for May 18th. Students received COVID tests on Wednesday to be used if necessary upon arrival from spring break. Students are on spring break from March 20th through the 24th. One of our tennis doubles teams won their game on the 10th against Kelseyville. The senior trip is scheduled for April 29th. Track had their taco fundraiser on the 11th. Track event was canceled, but they still served the food to those who bought the tickets. My apologies for sitting late and for not being able to be there. That concludes her report. Any questions or comments? All right, next presentation is Complete Street Safety. David?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. At this time, I'd like to invite and introduce members of the assessment team, Taylor McAdam from the firm Farr and Peers. And let's just take a look. I think she's the only member of the team at this point. But a little background on this item before we begin. The city applied for funding through UC Berkeley to obtain or to have completed a complete street safety assessment. Berkeley, the UC system, has a transportation safety arm where they promote best practices and of course, through their engineering department, you know, promote sound engineering to address the needs of pedestrians, bicyclists, and also safe vehicular travel. Through that effort, we were funded, and UC Berkeley retained the firm of Farr and Peers. It's a well-respected transportation consulting firm to perform the assessment. A walking audit was done with the team, and it was led up by Ms. McAdam, who's going to give us a presentation tonight. The real focus of that assessment was on the corridor of East First Street, which is obviously a key arterial in our downtown, up to the Crocker Bridge, and then the section of Osti Road between First Street and Citrus Fair Drive, and then all of Citrus Fair Drive. And it was about a half day of work performing the audit. And the outcome is a fairly detailed assessment report that was included in the agenda packet. A lot of information. We're not going to cover all that tonight and really just give council a high-level overview of some of the key findings as it relates to those road segments. So without further ado, I'd just like to go ahead and introduce Ms. McAdam. Again, she was a member of the assessment team, and she's going to walk us through a brief presentation providing an overview of the assessment. So with that, Taylor, I'll turn it over to you if you want to take that moment to introduce yourself. And you can proceed with the presentation.
Great, thanks. Nice to be with you all this evening. Thanks for having me. We, yeah, as David mentioned, it's called a complete street safety assessment, and this is something anyone in the state can apply for. We prepared this. Oh, okay. Sure. How's it sound now? Okay. Great. So, yes, we prepared, we did our field visit and prepared this report in the summer and fall of last year. And this is with the arm of the Berkeley program that David mentioned. It's called the Berkeley Safe Transportation Research and Education Center. And actually, Councilmember Bagby participated in the walk audit with us, so wanted to thank her for that, even though she's not there tonight. All right, so I thought what would be helpful is to just give an overview of what you can find in the report. Because as David mentioned, there is a lot in there. But so we've, there were kind of four components. There, we did a benchmarking analysis of Cloverdale's bicycle, pedestrian policies, programs, and practices, so kind of comparing what Cloverdale does or has in policy to other cities in the state or even nationwide. And that was done at a citywide level. We then also did a collision data analysis, and that was also at a citywide level. And then there were two pieces that just focused on kind of those corridors that David mentioned. East First Street, up until the bridge, Osti Road, and Citrus Fair Drive. And so this was kind of our walking audit area where we went out and observed in person. And then based on that audit, we also had very specific, you know, potential improvements that we've recommended for those corridors. On the collision analysis, super-high-level snapshot is just that among small, other small California cities, Cloverdale is pretty much right in the middle with regards to total fatal and injury collisions over the last five years. In that time, there weren't any bicycle collisions, and so kind of the higher proportion of pedestrian collisions compared to other small California cities. In the report, you can find a lot more detail on those individual collisions. Sometimes the complete street safety assessments are prompted because cities have a major collision challenge. And I would say that wasn't the case for Cloverdale. Instead, the interest here is really kind of upcoming land use changes or just corridor changes for the Osti Road and East First corridors, you know, if SMART comes, and wanting to make sure that is a great corridor for recreational cyclists and walkers as well to get over to the parks. Benchmarking, this is again just a snapshot of what you can find. There were actually over 50 topics that were benchmarked against other cities. But for example, for each topic, we kind of score it as a strength, you know, something that could be enhanced but is generally on track or an opportunity. And so in this section, kind of Cloverdale had one in each bucket. So does a great job coordinating with transit agencies, you know, bicycles can be accommodated. In coordination with health agencies, that's definitely an area for improvement. And then coordination with emergency response, generally on track, but there are a few things that could be changed. So you can kind of scan through the benchmarking section to see where the city has greatest opportunity for improvement. And so then I thought I'd just at a high level show the specific improvements that we are recommending on each of these corridors. They are very high-level concepts at this time, and you know, many of these would need to be studied with further engineering. But on East First Street, you know, a few of the things we noticed, there are sidewalk gaps that could be filled and just some additional crosswalks, just adding visibility and dedicated space for pedestrians, especially on the way to the kind of recreation areas closer to the bridge. We recommend kind of new striping treatments, especially at the intersection of First, Crocker, and Osti Roads. And there's also, you know, the shared use path kind of along the north side there on Crocker, which today is separated by kind of a small cement curb. We show some alternatives for what could be considered for, you know, optimal comfort for pedestrians in that area. On Osti, this is where, you know, in the future, this, the kind of right-of-way where the SMART corridor or currently railroad, not currently used by SMART, but could be used in the future. This could turn into a off-street multi-use path or could be incorporated into the roadway to just enhance the comfort for bicyclists and pedestrians. So show some options for that. And then of course, there is the housing project planned along Osti Road, and we have some recommendations, you know, to install a crosswalk there. And again, just visibility for pedestrians. And same thing down at the Citrus Fair and Osti Road intersection, a new kind of striping plan. And then moving on to the last corridor, Citrus Fair Drive. Kind of one of the big things here was to add visibility for bicyclists across the Caltrans on and off ramps for 101. So there are, you know, bike lanes today, but they blend in with the vehicle travel lanes. And so highlighting those, the city is also actually already working on some of the design treatments for Cloverdale Boulevard and Citrus Fair Drive, some of the recommendations there. But anyway, so high-level concepts. And with all of these, I would say, just before I move on to questions, is that what are next steps might be a question you have? And there is kind of near-term, just looking for opportunities to incorporate these. So if you're going to repave and restripe any of these roads, that's a great opportunity to change some of the striping and street markings. When that land use project happens on Osti, you know, making sure that crosswalk gets added. So kind of piecemeal, just opportunistically incorporating these things. But of course, you could also, this report will provide a great background to apply for grants at a local, regional, and state level, and there are a lot of opportunities to do that. The federal government recently has very much increased its focus on safety, and that has trickled down to funding at the state and local level. So that's my quick presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. I'll pass it around to the council members. Councilmember Wheeler?
No, Mayor, I have no questions.
Councilwoman Morgan Stern?
No questions.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And City Manager David Kelly and I spoke about this a little earlier in the week. And David, I'm just going to go ahead and ask the same questions that I had asked you. And whenever we have a study like this done, I always like the group that's doing the study to hopefully come back with some recommendations on where we can get some grant money to fulfill some of these projects. You have the tentacles that are out there with the Department of Transportation and the Senate and the Assembly. So if you know of any grant money that we could possibly apply for, I know having this report definitely gives us a leg up if something should arise. And I think, David, you had shared with me that the Community Block Development Grant was going to be a pretty good one this year. Hopefully to have some improvements done. I'm real concerned about the end of First Street as it ties into the bridge. And I think you had mentioned that. We have those little bumps in the road. So I would just like to hear if you know of any grant money that's available for us that we can go after to get some of these projects done. And basically, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. So there's two things I'll mention in response. One is that Sonoma County, the SCTA, is about to embark on a county-wide active transportation plan and will also complete seven local plans as part of that. Cloverdale is one of those. So that is another plan, but it is much broader in scope. It doesn't just focus on these three corridors, but of course, these would probably be the three you highlight for them to spend a lot of time on. But that whole planning effort will set up Cloverdale and the other seven jurisdictions for Go-Sonoma funding. And so these are projects that you can, you know, highlight to be put into your local active transportation plan. And that is set to kick off, I think, in the next month or so, so very near-term. So it's not a grant funding, but it's actually like the county will roll that up and can make that request on your behalf. In terms of grant funding, the one thing that's a little tricky is that the state, to be eligible for state safety grants, like HSEP or ATP grants at the state, you have to have completed what's called an LRSP, Local Road Safety Plan. I know as part of the benchmarking effort, we identified that was something that Cloverdale had not done. And David, you can correct me if that has changed in the interim. But in order to apply for state safety grants, which would fund a lot of these projects on their own, you would need to complete that first. It's just one of their requirements now. But again, there are still opportunities to apply to complete some of these projects as part of other efforts, like the land use projects or working with Caltrans directly to like stripe those bicycle lanes.
I think a couple of weeks back, maybe a month or so, Hillsburg received an $11 million grant, the city for, I believe it was bicycle lane improvements. And I felt kind of bad that we didn't get anything out of that. But that's the type of money that I'm kind of looking for.
Yeah.
Be interested in hearing if there's anything out there. I know the CBD grant money should be coming soon. I don't know.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We know that, you know, funding these suggestions as outlined in the report is not easy because they come with, you know, a lot of costs in terms of not only design work, but ultimately constructing those improvements. So that's very mindful that this is something that we have to really work hard at is identifying and applying for, you know, the grant funds and preparing ourselves to be successful in that effort. You mentioned the Community Development Block Grant. So we had brought that to council to do pedestrian-level improvements on East First Street. Our funding application was in the amount of $700,000. It shows you the kind of the cost parameters we're dealing with with a relatively small section of sidewalk and ADA improvements. But we, the Technical Advisory Committee, did recommend funding our project at the 50% level, so about 300, approximately 350,000. So we're going to be looking at how we can phase that project in two phases. And, you know, we'll be seeking funding very likely again next year, unless we can supplement that with, you know, some impact fees or other revenue to do the project in its entirety. So, you know, it's really looking at these different funding sources that are available and, you know, tackling some of these recommendations as opportunities present themselves. And I think I'm really thankful that we have this report. I think it's something that we should, you know, keep at the top of the table, keep a look at, look for those opportunities when either development comes forward or projects come forward or there's funding available so we can prioritize the projects that we want to undertake and seek funding for them. want to undertake and seek funding for them. We, for instance, kind of through SCTA, we applied back in 2021 to do some improvements along the Boulevard, and we were notified that we were awarded a total of $1.2 million in next fiscal year, funding program through SCTA for two separate efforts. One is to do some ADA sidewalk gap improvements, and then also to complete the existing sidewalk gap where we left off on our Safe for Austin School Program. So those are all little achievements that we're making, and again, having this report, I think, provides an opportunity for council, maybe through a subcommittee, to identify what are things we want to pursue next, you know, what are priorities? There's a lot here, so we really need council's input and feedback on, you know, which ones, what are the key priorities so that we can try to match funding with those projects? And like Taylor indicated, you know, there is also some planning work we can get done to make sure that when we do apply for these grants, we can check the box that we've completed the, you know, the local safety road plan, which, you know, may also provide a set of recommendations and suggestions like this report has on improvements we can make to, you know, improve. And, you know, not all of it's directed at pedestrian safety and bicycle safety, a lot of it is, but it's also about vehicle safety. How do you slow cars down? We know we get a lot of complaints about speeding, and so you can look at some of these improvements, and you can see that, you know, that's where they're directed, is how to make our environment more safe for vehicles, for pedestrians, for bicyclists, and do it in a manner that is, you know, conforms with, you know, current best practices in transportation safety, so.
Could we put that report on the, on next Tuesday's Public Works Subcommittee? Just kind of an update where we are with it? Have we started it? Do we want to do it, et cetera?
Absolutely, Vice Mayor. I think that's a great recommendation. We will do that, and I think it can be as a standing item and, again, serve as that reminder, but also foster discussion about, you know, of all these things that are recommended or suggested, you know, what do we want to prioritize? Because, again, there's a lot here that we can do, and it's, I think, we can't do it overnight, but we can, we got to start somewhere, and we can start checking off the list and, you know, with your feedback. I mean, there's things for public works, there's things for parks, there's things for the police department, all to kind of digest in this report, and we can take a look at all those.
Thank you, and thank you for your report.
Yeah, I'll reiterate what Vice Mayor said. Thank you for this great report. Even when, you know, we've discussed a lot of these topics for multiple years, it's nice to have the assessment and the report completed so we can use it to go forward for grant money and funding through state and county. So thank you very much. Vice Mayor, it's a great recommendation to go to the Public Works Committee, a subcommittee, and so thank you for that. And is there anything else we need other than that recommendation at this point and acceptance of the report?
No further action. If council wants to take a vote to just accept the report, that would be great for the record.
Okay, well then, with that, we would need, this isn't an action item, is it?
No, it's not.
So then, maybe a head nod on this one is, are we good? Are we, everyone good? So it looks like we have consensus throughout the four that are present.
Excellent, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you, Taylor.
We do have a hand raised in the audience if we want to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
...want to open it up to public.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry, thank you. I was watching, and I didn't see that hand go up.
It just popped up. Emily, we've just given you permission to speak if you would like to, you have three minutes.
Thanks, yes, hello. I'm Emily. I am the advocacy coordinator for the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, so thanks for giving me an opportunity. We just wanted to say thanks very much for sharing this report. It's really got a lot of useful information and identifies just a lot of opportunities to improve bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. The Bike Coalition is really always going to advocate for protected bike lanes as a default, so we're really happy to see these as options on Osti and Citrus Fair, and would really urge the city to move in this direction. Protected lanes, as you know, are really the most effective means of encouraging cyclists of all ages and abilities. We would also agree with the need, which was identified in the report, to look at bike facilities and complete streets as a network, rather than just approaching these projects piece by piece. Improvements to individual streets are useful, of course, but they don't always add up to a network that allows cyclists to get where they need to go safely. Lastly, it wasn't mentioned in the presentation, but it was in the report with regard to Vision Zero, we're happy that the city has adopted the county's plan, and would definitely encourage the development of a specific local plan, which other communities in the county are looking at as well. So, thanks, that's all.
Thank you, Emily. Other hands? Seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No one else has their hands raised at this time.
Anyone in our audience? Seeing none? Okay, great. Moving on to consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Does anyone want any of these items polled? Seeing none. No one in the audience, so we have a motion.
Motion to approve.
So a move to approve, we have a second?
Yes, we do.
Great, we have a motion and a second. All, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Morgenstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilter?
Aye.
And Mayor Lance?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0, and Councilmember Bagby is not present. We have no new business on our calendar. It's amazing. So we'll move right into subcommittee reports. Finance, Admin, and Police, our next meeting is scheduled for April 3rd. Planning and Sustainability is April 18th. Public Works?
Mr. Mayor, we'll be meeting on this coming Tuesday, 1:30 at City Hall.
Thank you. Joint City and School, April 17th, and the Homelessness Community Advisory Group?
Is June 12th is our next meeting.
Great. Any council member reports? National reports?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple. I have been working pretty close with Andy, you know, it's Red Cross Month here in Cloverdale, and I've been working pretty close with Andy on getting a blood drive coordinated here in Cloverdale. We've had numerous emails, and one thing I learned about it was I did not know there was northern boundaries and a boundary for blood for the Red Cross folks to actually set up a blood drive in town. We've been working with Anika and a couple other folks on that. She was willing to give us, and what I have here is, we have American Red Cross, and it's kind of an intent, we need to get 50 people to sign throughout town, which I'm working on right now, and there was a lot of parameters with the facility also. They needed 1,200 square feet, ADA bathrooms and all that. The vet building works perfect. Talked to Al Delsen over there and Bob Cox, and they said, "Not a problem, we can use that." So we're kind of in the infant stages of it. Looks like it would happen probably around like September, maybe? So we're working on that. I'm going to try to get it, I will get it up here and make sure we can get the blood drive going. And also, and then another thing is, have a meeting with Steve Stewart and, oh, forgive me, I forget her name, she's a health officer over at the high school, Nora? Nora? Have a meeting when they get back from spring break on getting some of the kids involved in, on their Community Service Day of, I've been harping on painting these curves and getting things done around here, and maybe working with some of the kids and see what his thoughts on that are, and have them work on the Boulevard, get the Boulevard done first. And also Hector's involved too, he's got some projects, we're going to get together there and figure out which ones we want to do with the kids, and that's where we're at. And then also talked with Derek on a few things, on some volunteer opportunities, because I know that's not something we're looking at getting done here in the next month, next six months, but looking at volunteer opportunities to have people possibly, you know, do their neighborhood and working with the city to supply the, you know, get the supplies in one central location, show them how we want it done, and maybe just get rolling on it. It's going to be an ongoing project, but that's the hot and heavy items from this guy.
Good information, thank you, sir. Anyone else with anything? All right, we have a legislative report for a letter of support for Copper Tower Family Medical Center, Alexander Valley Healthcare.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you for signing the letter. It's just included in the council's agenda packet for reference. We were asked, requested by Alexander Valley Healthcare to provide a letter of support to Congressman Huffman's office in regards to funding that's provided through the Congress in our letter of support is to echo the need for funding to be able to construct that facility, and the mayor gratefully signed, so I wanted to include it in the packet for your reference.
Thank you, sir. City manager report?
No reports, Mayor.
City attorney report?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you for being here. Any current impacts to water supply?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just real briefly, you know, we've seen with the, you know, significant storm events that our reservoirs have been basically at or maybe even exceeding their short-term capacity. With that, we will be bringing forward a recommendation to reduce the current water shortage emergency, and also an amendment to the water, the corresponding water surcharge. There will be some information placed on the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee meeting, as discussed earlier, and then bringing that forward to council for consideration at your next meeting on April 12th.
Thank you. Council Direction on Future Agenda Items. Councilmember Wheeler?
None.
Morgenstern?
None.
Vice Mayor?
I'm good, thank you.
And you took mine from me, so it's great, so thank you for bringing that forward on your own.
Try to steal your thunder, Mayor.
No, I love it when someone else gets to do it. All right, if there is nothing else from anyone else, the meeting is adjourned at 6:41. Next meeting is scheduled for April 12th. Thank you.